Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank everyone for attending. We'll call the meeting order at six o'clock. The agenda's set. We're gonna go right into our presentations and I think Kim and the club are up first.
Yeah, so.
Mayor, why don't you come on up and bring the Lego and robotics team? This is a group who they meet on Monday nights and they do all kinds of cool things. Recently, they competed and took first place, so I invited the crew to come tonight and just tell us a little bit about what they do and some of the cool things that they're building and the collaboration and teamwork that goes into this as well. So I'll turn it over to you guys. Who wants to come up first? You got it? You're on.
All right, this is Team 4646, the high-tech hornets. We are part of FL, the first Lego League, but we do a lot more than just Legos. When we go to competition, there's three main parts: the robot, competition, the core values, and then the project part. So we'll start with the project.
So for the project, we have to discover a challenge that is challenging for our community, something that we are affected by. So we chose a wheelchair ramp that could be accessible for the school, school and elementary stage. So it is a ramp that is fitted for the steps so people with walking disabilities, wheelchairs, crutches, and walkers can get up for a good seat.
And so these are our core values. Some things that we pretty much use and do every single day. So we have discovery, which basically means that we discover new things about the world and everything around us. And integration, which means that we use our core values outside of school. And we have inclusion, which means that we include everyone in our team and we take their ideas and use them. And then we have competition, which means that we respect and have spirit towards our robot.
All right, so this is our robot. We named it Atlas because it has overcome many challenges over the course of the season. We had three main goals this season for our robot: simplicity because we want it to be easily, easy to take apart and put back together. And in competition, we only have two and a half minutes to complete as many missions as we can, so we want to be efficient with our time to get the most amount of points. And in the Buffalo qualifier, we got the most amount of points and won an award for that.
Corbin, are you saying something over there? Do you want to say something?
Um, well, the robot, we came first place for the points, which means that we completed the mission successfully and the other teams did not complete as many missions or as successfully as we did. And the robot design, I think was that one? This one was the robot performance and that was the project. And our project was the ramp. And they thought it was like a really good idea and that we could probably implement it into this school environment.
We were very successful this year, as he said, even though we had many speed bumps. Different things happened. We had a computer fail, but after all, we still made it as far as we did last year, probably even better.
Everybody, you guys represent. I feel that way that we're proud of and we want to celebrate you guys. Thanks. Thank you for coming. Yes, and thank you for all that you do with this group.
Thank you for all the support that you give here.
So how many schools are you competing against in a, I guess, a tournament or a convention like this?
Well, it varies from each competition.
The qualifier, we went to Buffalo.
Okay.
Buffalo had 12 teams, so we got two awards out of the Buffalo one. And then they only select a few teams to move up to the regional, the whole big area from many teams from all over, the Southern Tier, Syracuse, they come from all over. There was 44 teams there. So we came home with one nice trophy. They thought we had the best presentation, so our kids did a great job.
Are there more competitions or is that?
Um, yeah, it goes all the way to worlds.
Yeah. If you're really good and you win Rochester, you get to go to St. Louis or this year, I think it's Detroit, but that's like, that's really, like, some of those teams, we, I think we do really good. But our team, we practice at least every Wednesday. We get a late start. Our school doesn't start until September after Labor Day. Some of these teams start August 1st when it kicks off. So we're kind of like a month behind and we come in, work hard. We had to work some extra practices because our laptop crashed like a week and a half before the competition. So these kids were true first. They came in and they did what needed to be done, but they did really good. Some of those teams, they practice five days a week. Their school programs, after-school sports is what they are. And really, that's what robotics is, is a sport for the mind. So you just take it to the next level.
You guys did a really nice presentation. You spoke really well and had it divided up in a very interesting way. So I appreciate that.
Would you guys mind introducing yourselves as you go down the line?
Corbin will start on this end.
Yeah, please.
I'm Corbin.
I'm Hunter.
I'm Carson.
I'm Ronald.
I'm Logan.
I'm Eliana.
I'm Connor.
I'm Bryce.
I'm Sam.
Nice job, guys. Really well done.
I'm just happy you're doing so well in the competition, so it's great.
The problem that you guys had to, I guess, you know, come up with and try to come up with a solution, do they ever give you certain situations that you have to solve or is it really just what you want to make of it?
They give you a theme.
This one was city shaper. You had to find a problem in your environment or.
In your community, okay.
And so we found that any gap access to the goal was a problem and it needed to be solved, so that's what we specifically wrote down.
Want to tell how much you're stage?
We talked to some of the school.
We reached out to our principal. We asked for some help on ideas.
Input, input was dedicated and researched well.
You said you had three goals for your robot and the first one was simplicity. What were the other two?
Multi-purpose attachments and repeatability.
Repeatability. Multi-purpose attachments and repeatability?
Yes. Multi-purpose attachments are attachments that you don't really have to do much to. There are one attachment, you can do multiple stuff with it.
What they do, first Lego League, it's a national, international thing. They actually have a kit. It's a standard kit that every team participates. They get a kit. So we have this table that's in our library over here and it's set up so every school, every team practicing on the same field. And there's not one answer, one right way to do anything. It's amazing when you go to the competition because you'll see so many different approaches to the same mission. So this one had 16 possible missions. We looked at it, we'd have the table and we kind of, we do a lot of talking before we even start programming. This year, the kids did two different robots and we tried to merge ideas and see what can we do to get the most bang for our buck in our two and a half minutes. We take some ideas from each of the groups and put them together and they kind of go, they really are amazing. These kids are adaptable. They learn from other things. It's amazing what they'll think of. If you have one thing that kind of works sometimes, then another kid says, well, let's do this. And then it's amazing how the teamwork happens. So I think it's a great program for here at school.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thanks for presenting to us tonight.
Thank you.
So I'll add one more thing to that presentation. One of the hallmarks of the next generation learning standards are students' ability to collaborate critically, to communicate. And I think this group demonstrates those skills in space, so it's embodiment of all the things we want, a good, solid education. Nice job, group. You guys are freezoes. So you want to start school August 1st? Is that what you said? Parents are like, sure. And to travel a little bit is the, you know, the other thing I wanted to present is a proposition for a new course that Mrs. Glidden has worked on called Developing Physical and Mental Mindfulness. And I'll let her speak a little bit more specifically on what the course could be needed, but in the general sense, our students today are faced with a lot of mental health stressors and research has proven a lot of schools have committed full-time to a position where someone helps students deal with those stressors through a mindfulness program where they have appropriate vehicles to deal with stress. In our class that we're proposing, Mrs. Glidden's going to hopefully teach, and we'll teach our students that example, mindfulness. So if you would like to butcher that and you want to jump in, can you?
No, I wrote quite a long proposition there. Okay, so you saw that, right? I have been a yoga instructor for, it'll be four and three-quarter years now, and I'm going through another training, so I'll be 500 hours certified in three different types of yoga. And, you know, anytime I've done it with teachers, staff, I've had students come after school, they love it, but they can't find the time. And when I do it in school, the kids seem so much more peaceful and more comfortable, even if it's just a breathing exercise. And I've talked to a bunch of students and they would be thrilled to be able to do this. And I thought it would work really well with our athletes as well, too, because they can't do a lot of these things, but it's so beneficial. The breathing, the learning how to move, to hold poses, to stretch, to relax. I've seen the benefit for myself. So I wasn't expecting to present other than to ask, to answer any questions. So I know I have a bunch of students that are seniors that would love to take it right now.
The thought process is it would be a phys ed credit, not in addition to regular phys ed class, but just an additional credit?
It's elective, yeah.
An option today.
Because I'm not certified as phys ed, but I'm certified, I am a certified yoga instructor.
So it would serve as a, yes, a half, you're looking at a half-year, 20-week course?
Twenty weeks, yeah.
Who was it open to? Was it nine through 12 or was it?
Yeah, it would be high school, yeah. Because the, I would love to have like a little meditation room for kids to just go when they're stressed out, that they could just be in a quiet spot, but that's something maybe that can come down the line and.
Middle school kids have a lot of other requirements.
Oh, yeah, I know, I do. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so having elected at high school.
Yeah, but they do, I mean, I did it with my eighth graders just recently. And I know I have a little student who complained about arthritis and we talked about him sitting a certain way so that he would be more comfortable and he actually thanked me afterwards. So it's, it's those funny things that you think that they wouldn't get it, especially in eighth grade, but they do. They get it. Some of them get it and they really like it, so.
How many students are you targeting or hoping for for?
As many as I can get, but, I mean, I'm kind of busy. I have seventh, seventh grade family consumer science, eighth grade family consumer science, transitions, cooking class, healthy living class. So it would be the extra periods, hopefully that, you know, we can fit it into the extra periods. I'm not giving up anything. It would be still in addition to those classes as well.
Do you hope to start it for the spring semester this year?
It would be awesome if I could, but.
Where, which room would you use for it?
Well, the, I have two rooms. If we had to, I could move tables around. I already have the mats and blocks. Phys ed has shared it with me since I've been doing yoga classes when we were there. I used to walk past the room when I was teaching after school. But there's the Wii room, too, which probably would be a little more, it's small, so.
The decision is specific about what room it might be. Have them have made the first step or go ahead and just propose it.
Or would that also depend on how many students enroll?
Right. This has been done. This, if you noticed, I had a high school class that was, this is from California, but I talked with Connie and she found an article about Long Island actually has a class that they started with a 20-week course and ended up doing three sections because the kids liked it so much.
Chicago School, State School, that's right, do this. They implement this part of their day as well. It starts in the elementary and works all the way up through.
Right, right.
I don't know of any other school district in Genesee County that has.
Webster.
I'm not in Genesee County. I'm not, I, I said Webster and you're right, but there's somebody else who said, I don't know any other.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've been doing this.
It seems like you're qualified to do it. Like, you're more than qualified to do it. And you're already out there with a lot of kids to begin with.
And I teach at Blue Pearl. I do teach.
Right.
Right, you're, well, I teach at Matavia, so, so, yeah.
And the cost doesn't seem that exuberant. I mean, it seems like you've got a lot of the matters. I saw some, some cost there, but didn't.
Yeah, um, yeah, because what I was looking at was maybe a yin yoga practice, which is more of like, it's stretching the fascia and those are things that they can actually like then relax into the poses and really stretch the areas that they don't stretch at all, you know? So that's, that would be good to have ulcers and other blocks and straps.
Sure.
And it, and it would help modify for any students that may have issues with flexibility and so that allows them to access the poses a lot easier that way.
Sounds cool.
I have a, are you?
No, no, it sounds really cool.
A nuts and bolts question. I was wondering, would the students have, have to have time to change or if it was an every other day course, they could adjust what they're wearing? Or could they participate in the class, like just show up to class and begin right away so you get the maximum amount of?
Oh, yeah, well, see, the whole thing is, the way this is, and I love the way this class was set up on this because it really does concentrate on them teaching each other, too. So learning the poses, teaching each other. And so, you know, if they're uncomfortable, like stretchy or clothing, they don't have to change. But I'm hoping to do like actual classes where we'll spend some time just working on a specific like body area and then do that for 30 minutes where they'll actually have a class and then have time to shavasana, which is the relaxation pose of the earth. So that's my hope is that we'll be able to spend some time actually understanding the poses, understanding the importance of the breathing and the poses and being present, being present right then and there, not on a phone, not somewhere else, you know, present. I think that's really important. Well, that's what I, I read the rationale and I read that you were hoping that it would meet every day. And so then I was in my mind going through the nuts and bolts. Okay, bell rings, they, they're already there. Right. It would add a whole level of. And there'll be some education on it, too. Oh, right, yeah. There'd be a whole level of mess if they had to go find a locker room to change. If they could go right there and participate as is, you'd get maximum amount of class value. Yeah, and just as long as they wear comfortable clothes. Right, that's. Which, from what I've seen, most of the kids. Dress shorts and stuff like that, so. Most of them, they're already in shorts, you know? So, yeah.
Great. Any other questions?
No, but it could have some long-term benefits, I think, for even, even students that are at-risk students behavior-wise, if you could get in there and then maybe tie it to like referral rate and see if that has a positive effect on referral rate for if they're able to kind of collect themselves in a way that you've instructed and to kind of just release a little bit in a more positive way.
Yeah.
And that, that would be best-case scenario down the road, but it could be a data point that you could collect and say, wow, how great this program is.
That would be, yeah. I, you know, there's, there's unintended benefits from a lot of these things.
Right, not that that would definitely show up in the first two weeks, but it could be something it's down the road that we could track and say, hey, look at where this came from. There's a direct correlation to the number of students and our referral rate. That'd be a neat thing to do.
And I know our stressed-out students who are working so hard and to have some time, some downtime.
Copy mechanisms that they need to have that they don't have right now.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, see you tomorrow.
Bye.
Thank you.
Approve of the man. It's be resolved at the minutes of the 11:19 meeting. Be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? Visitors' requests?
Nope.
Okay. Warrants, internal claims be resolved after an audit of the bills, the 11:26, 12:12. Warrants and internal claims auditor reports be approved. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes? Treasurer's report be resolved, that the treasurer's report for 11:19 be approved. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes? First reading of two policies.
As I mentioned before, nothing burschattering here, just two policies that need to be updated. The first one is on school safety plans. The new policy just is more specific in the timeline. All district emergency plans need to be to SED by October 1st, which then means really towards the end of the summer, we will present to the Board of Education, you know, the district's safety plans. And the building plans, each building plan needs to be to the local and state police by October 1st. We already do this, so we have a process in place. It's just a new policy that now has that strict guideline of getting that stuff submitted by October 1st.
The student inclusion on that, is that new for us?
Well, we need to be cautious about including students in building and safety plans. There's an option to include students. We have decided not to just because of the confidentiality and some of the things that we do discuss with local law enforcement and some of the plans and some of our reactions to plans and evacuation routes and things like that. We don't want students to have more information than they really need to. So we don't, we don't include students in our safety plans. Not that we don't provide them or give or receive feedback from them. You know, we're constantly, you know, working with, you know, our SRO and, you know, talking with kids, but as far as meeting and sitting down and actually developing the plan and getting that approved by the state, we don't include students, you know, just because of some of the private information we discuss. The other policy is just an update to leaves of absence. This is in addition to, you know, the jury duty and things like that. There's a new law out there that gives any employee three hours of paid leave to vote in any local, state, federal elections if necessary. We have already been through this a couple times already in the district. It is not really any sort of detrimental effect to the, to the district. I haven't had anybody come forward yet to, to take advantage of that. It also provides a leave of absence to victims of domestic violence. Unfortunately, now, there's been, you know, uptake in some of those situations, so if the district is aware of an employee being a victim of domestic violence and there's a need for that employee to take a leave of absence, the district can't be discriminatory against that. So that's really what those two updates are for.
Any questions?
How are, how, for the voting, how is that posted to employees? You send out an email and say?
It's a week before.
It's 10 days, right?
It's about a week, 10 days before. I mean, honestly, with all of the local, state, federal, like, that sign up, 365.
Yeah, we have one up.
I just wondered where it's at.
Yeah.
On our door when you want.
And you send out an email?
We just have it posted on the.
That's all it says here is that you have to post it. I was just wondering if you sent out an email and said.
And then an employee needs to give us, you know, basically two days, two, two days notice that they're gonna take the time. But it doesn't.
Just curious how you did it. Some districts send out emails, some just post it. Doesn't.
Really, some of these, some of these laws are put into effect because of, you know, New York City and people driving six or eight hours to and from work and don't have the time. It really doesn't, doesn't seem to affect our region here.
No, it really doesn't.
No. I did ask a survey with the other superintendents and they didn't have any requests for someone to take off, so.
Yeah, well, we can do it.
Right.
Any questions? Does anybody have strong feelings on moving forward to approve these tonight or do you want to punt to next meeting and take care of them? Or do I just push it to next meeting in case any questions pop up? Wait. All of those, okay? Okay, the ball?
So as I discussed at the last meeting, the reports I provided, I have added some of the account codes that are going to be required for us to report by building level. So you'll notice in, if you look, if you look at the budget status report, there's a couple of accounts that have nothing in them. So next meeting, I will present budget transfer information and then we'll go from there. Because I have to move some of the, like, supplies, materials, salaries, all have to be by building for the instructional codes. So I have to work on that and I will get you that budget transfer information for the next meeting. Other things, starting to work on the budget. My plan is the next meeting, I will have all the non-instructional components, like a rough draft of those to you with some assumptions, obviously. And long-range plan will be, I am also working on that. I lost that week there that I was on vacation, so just been trying to play a little bit of catch-up. So plan on getting that as well. So I'll need feedback. I'm going to send out the reserve fund plan and get feedback from you all on how, how, what your perception is of how we need to proceed with that and the funding levels and some other assumptions on that one, so.
So I was going to ask you at the last community meeting on the capital project, Bill asked a question.
Yep.
About the aid. Do you feel reasonably confident that our numbers are close in terms of what we could expect for state aid?
Yes. So Bill's question was related to building aidable units, which would change if we have, if we're adding any space to our facilities, which we're not. We'd have to prove that we have the student population or an increase in that. We, and we don't. We're working under the current BAUs, which is what they call it, which there's a factor that gives you our maximum cost allowance. So we're working under that maximum cost allowance that refreshes every five years. So we're well within that range. So I also pulled up our building aid for the last five years. And in the last five years, our building aid is but hovering around 90, 90% building aid. So over the last five years, I don't, I don't.
You're saying 93, right?
It's 92.4 right now. So it's been hovering between 90 and 93 for the last five years. So I have strong feelings about that. When we look at the costs for a capital project, we make assumptions that potentially up to 5% won't be aided. And that's for, they look at all of the plans and the drawings and after we're done, we submit all of our costs. And they look at everything. And at the last project, they were nitpicking painting for $600 or they don't aid on equipment that we buy, so they won't aid on that, but.
And they make those determinations before you've done the work and spent the money?
We, no. Well, you, we work with the project manager and the architects to determine what's going to be aidable and they work as hard as they can to make sure all of those things are aidable because that's just, that's what they help you do. I mean, we wouldn't do a project that we weren't comfortable it was going to be aidable in this manner.
Can I ask another follow-up question from the last board meeting? Did you find out, were you going to research the cost of negotiating our own pilot versus having the GCEDC do it?
Did I, did you send that? I forwarded that email to you. So I, I sent some information out, so, but I can recap for you. So Avon is in a little bit different of a situation because their IDA exempts solar projects in a different manner than our Economic Development Corporation does. So that being said, they negotiate their own pilot and it's about a fifth, I believe, of what we would get per megawatt hour if GCEDC negotiated it. Plus they have to, so they don't get as much money, plus they have to pay their own attorney's fees. That's really the only comparison person I have around.
So did you talk to, just curious, the Avon people directly?
Yes, I talked to their school business official who I sit on, with the school business officials with and.
The only reason I ask is I was at a meeting last night and someone said, wow, Avon really cleaned up on their solar project pilot. So I, and because it was a direct contradiction of what Mark Massey said.
So I don't know what they're referring to, the per-megawatt hours, but that's what he broke it down by. She sent me the information. It was like $1,100 per megawatt hour. So I don't know. They're, they're also in the phases of having a really big one, a humongous one put on their property. So I don't know which one they're referring to, but as far as I know, the ones she's negotiated, because when they get to be a certain dollar amount, they aren't negotiated by the school district or the county anymore. They're negotiated directly through the IDA is what, and the state. That's, that's all the feedback that I got. Does that make sense? I don't know what, if she's talking about, if they're talking about a project that they aren't.
They talked about the school board really making out well. That was what the word was last night.
They didn't have any, any figures for you?
I told that speaker, that's opposite of what I heard. So our school board was defensive about this because.
So maybe they made out well because it was Agland already or the exemption isn't the same in living. or the exemption isn't the same in Livingston County as it is in Genesee. There's a lot of factors that go into it. I can further check, but.
I'll, he said he was gonna check too and I'll get back to you with that because I think it all comes from that law, what is it, forty-three or forty-seven or something? So I don't, I don't know how, there could be a different way unless.
The property law, yeah. It has to do with what the IDAs and the economic developments exempt as well. Because she was mentioning something about getting that lower payment and I was like, well, why would we even do that if we have to pay our attorneys then too? Because they're gonna have to sit on it and they cost two hundred and fifty dollars per hour.
Was she happy with what they got or was she regretting that she had?
No, no, she was happy with what they got. But again, there's different rates in different counties and I don't know. If that was land, they was already exempt or they weren't paying taxes on anyways, then I would be happy about that too. Right? So if it's, if it's land that's ag exempt or very low property taxes, then what, I mean.
See, that's what my puzzle is, because I don't know if that is just the GCEDC wanting to have that influence and control and if the GCEDC's share of the pie is impacted by how much.
Negotiated with us, is that what you're saying? Trust me, I, I am in the same boat with you.
How many megawatt projects were they talking about?
I think the cut-off is.
The one they're talking about, Galloway, I think was two or three.
So like in terms of grand scheme of dollars, so here's your email, says Avon's been gaining a thousand dollars per megawatt and then has to pay attorney fees after that. And then GCEDC is negotiating fifty-five hundred, of which we would get roughly sixty percent, so a little over three thousand. And how many megawatts did you just say?
So the one they're planning on, Galloway Road, is two to three megawatts.
So we're not talking about like huge.
We're not talking about a huge dollar share. So that's what I'm wondering.
But the one in Alabama is way bigger than that. The one that they're snooping about for is fifteen hundred acres and a hundred and fifty-two megawatts.
Correct, which I don't know if we get input on that negotiation either.
You, you can, that's the one Mark was talking about, one of the ones he wanted to.
He wanted to fully negotiate with us.
Yeah, on our behalf, so to speak.
Oh, okay.
So I know that the GCEDC gets their fee based on the total capital amount that's invested, totally apart from the pilot. But if there's so much pie, he always gives the example of there's this much pie and the developer can only do the project if there's this much pie. If you demand a bigger pie, they won't do the project. So what we discussed last night at the meeting was, okay, does the size of the pie, is that dependent on how much the GCEDC demands for their percentage of a capital investment? He says they're two separate things, but if they want the pie.
But if that was less, would we get more of a pie?
Exactly, if they want the pie for the pilot to be lower so they can demand a higher percentage, because I don't know that that percentage is a flat fee or if they negotiate that.
So let me ask her, because I know, again, that there is a bigger one that's going on and I don't know if that's the one that person was talking about. Maybe it was, because you're talking about the one, the Alabama one.
Yeah, that's still three or four years out, but if it goes through, that's huge. And the GCEDC came to the Alabama Town Board and asked, made the same proposal, oh, let us come in and negotiate on your behalf. And the town board was not really willing to do that.
They weren't as receptive, yeah.
Because the town board also has the possibility of negotiating a host agreement in addition to the pilot. That host agreement would come out of that pie. So then there would be less of the pie.
For them.
For, to be split up sixty percent for the school, this district, the county and then each town only gets six or eight percent.
Right.
The town itself bears most of the impact, but they only get the smallest percent.
Right, okay.
And.
I have the same feelings you have about that.
Yeah, I just don't, yeah, I did, I thought to myself, something not, maybe it's all okay.
So once this small project goes through, I would say we look at it again. I will contact Avon and see if they're in the middle of a big one where they have already negotiated the host agreement and the pilot agreement and see what she has to say about that. But when I reached out, that email that I had sent, sent to John, had been what, the ones she had talked to me about, so.
Good thing we checked that out again.
Yeah, I mean, and we also, just so you're aware, we did get a phone call that the town of Barry is having one wind turbine on our oak field within our district boundaries, just one, so.
The other thing to check into that I wasn't clear about is I was not under the impression that you could opt in and out once a project had begun.
You would still, whatever we were doing for the Galloway project is, because it's so close and small, it's gonna happen. But we, as long as they haven't approved anything for that yet, we can opt out as a district.
Okay, because.
Or in, whichever one it is, it's opposite of what you think.
Yeah, I went to a planning board training a few years ago and I could have understood it incorrectly, but my impression was that once you make the decision on a particular project, you can't hop in and out. But then someone else will say, oh, yeah, you can hop in and out.
You can't hop in and out, like, once that project is set, like, if they moved really fast and did it before we could make, make a motion for anything else, then we'd have to stick with where we're at.
Right.
But otherwise, we can if we, if we get the timing correct, so.
Yeah, you said, well, let's put the shovel on the ground, whatever.
I think it's way before the shovel.
Yeah, I think it's like, once it's approved by the planning, like, the, yeah, right? So the town of Alabama would have to approve that in their planning.
Issue their special use for it.
Yeah, so, okay. I will look at that and get back to you.
Just a few announcements, just as a recap, we held a capital project forum last week, Wednesday. I thought it went very well. Thank you to SEI and Rich and Ted for presenting. That presentation has been uploaded to our YouTube along with, obviously, our board meetings and it's also viewable, there's a link on our website to it. And just to let the community know, obviously, certainly more information and reminders will come out, but on Wednesday, March eighteenth, that will be the vote for the referendum to the community from eleven to eight. And again, we will be sending out additional information. I plan on having more informational forums, whether it be here at school or out to certain local organizations or, you know, fire halls, we'll certainly do that. And we'll certainly send out reminders and brochures, just reiterating the project, the scope of the project, the cost and the details of it. Want to thank our polar plunge participants and Donnell. They raised over twelve hundred dollars for Special Olympics and then basically went out and got really cold and really wet. But I want to thank Donnell and Corinne Gels, Adrian Fiori, Alex Grice, Andrew Kiesak and Dan Went. They all braved the cold weathers and did the polar plunge for Special Olympics, so, so thank you for that. Just an update to the board, I met with Linda Bataglia from the Genesee County Community Services and Bob Ricobono from the Genesee County Mental Health Offices. I had mentioned to you, they toured our facilities and we discussed and had conversations on a space for a satellite office here. They were very impressed with what it could, could promise and our conversations were very positive. We took pictures of the office, the outside, they needed a floor plan. And really what they're doing now, the work is in their court, they're applying to have a satellite office here and we talked about what that was going to look like. And conversations, like I said, were very positive and I think we're in a good spot to have a great partnership with them and for them to serve our students and community, hopefully soon. So I'll keep you posted on that. And then I just wanna, I don't know if you saw the article in today's Daily News, but congratulate Kelsey Schlegenhoff, part of one of her projects here in school. She established a toy drive for our community and she received a lot of gifts from the community, a lot of donations, a lot of our staff and teachers, you know, helped with that. And this past Saturday, she was able to offer up a toy drive for about thirty to thirty-five of our families here. And, you know, great work on her part and it really, really shows what our kids can do here. So there's an article, like I said, in the Daily News and so, you know, thank you to Kelsey for that. That was, that was great.
It was good art.
Yeah, it was great. So, that's all that I have.
Any questions for John? Okay, thanks, John. On a new business, be acknowledged, approved that the resignation of Board of Education member Bonnie Woodward, effective immediately be accepted?
Motion. So moved.
Second?
Second.
So attached, there's an email from Bonnie and I think, I think essentially with some of the other things she's taken on in her life, she's not able to devote the time to this that she feels she needs to, so. She's done this for twenty years, we have to make sure we do something for her.
Absolutely.
Take a vote, all those in favor? Aye?
Can we regret it? Accept it with regret and appreciation? Can we modify the motion to do that?
Sure. So that passes?
If I could just add on to that, so the board now has some options here when there's a vacancy. Given the timing of this, I would say that if it was at the beginning of the school year, I would maybe tell you that you would want to probably fill it, but certainly that's, that's a board option. You are certainly able to appoint someone to fill the vacancy until her, till the end of the school year or you can leave it vacant. That is something that the board will have to discuss, but there's no timeline on that, there's time to think about that. So moving forward, those really are, are the two options. You don't need to have a special election. The board has authorization that if you decided to appoint someone there, you would just need to approve that person and they would take the oath until the June meeting, until, like I said, the elections, elections occur or you can leave the seat vacant.
Any questions or comments on that?
How long does he have left?
This is the end of his term.
This would be the end of his term, correct.
How long does Tim have left?
Tim just got re-elected, so.
Sue Lord, right?
Yep, Tim Lord, the following.
Yeah, just short. Short, they're not really those recent.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, you two are most recent, then, yeah.
I think Tim's feeling better.
Yeah, he's old and he's better. I've talked to him a few times and he's sounding much better. He's expecting to come back in January.
That would be great.
Cleared for coming back today.
What if he wanted to do what he can, what Chris does, just to.
I'm not sure they have that, that sense.
Well, it'd be nice if he was here, I'd love to see him.
Hopefully in January.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda, be resolved that items eight-three, eight-point-three through eight-point-five be approved via consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? passes? Communications?
Can I do a, ask the housekeeping question? Do you want those proposals that you gave us for those builder, do you want those back? Whether they're named and shredded or eaten or anything?
No, no, that's public information.
My kids have colored on them all. If you want them back, you're done for.
Do they need more coloring? Because I still.
You know what, Lauren, she's learning how to cut right now, she's cutting everything, cutting blankets.
Let's see, discussion roundtable, I don't think anything was submitted. Committee reports, anybody have anything there?
I hope the Wellness Committee met, nothing, nothing ground-changing or anything at this point. Hitting up cookies. Nicole, are we hitting this week?
Yeah, the Health and Wellness Committee wanted to do something special for Christmas and then we realized that Mary gives all the kids cookies during Christmas time anyway, cut out. So that was initially our plan and then happy accident, we decided to make them Rice Krispie Treats. I think it was really well welcomed by the kids. Wow, we did it last Thursday, I think.
At the high school.
At the high school, yep, and the elementary is gonna be tomorrow. We made, we actually used Mary's Kitchen to make them, so it's pretty hilarious. But we're still moving in the same direction, trying to offer as much as we can. I sent out an email and Melissa Desmoy has agreed to be our wellness coach, mentor, where basically our health insurance gives us a certain amount of money and as part of that, the Oakfield District can take advantage of certain things they have going on. It was, there's a ten-day food eating challenge, so I sent that out to all staff. And it's helpful to have Melissa, who is able to go to some of the meetings for that and be the wellness champion. So we're trying to incorporate that and then also our health insurance into our wellness committee, so.
Anybody else?
Did you meet today with the instructional committee?
Today we did, yes.
Okay.
I had to leave the last one for the family emergency and it's still heading repercussions in my life, so maybe you'll have to give the report that I would have given if I had have been there.
Sure, we started out with the teacher feature. We had Mrs. Carlson present on her uses of GoGuardian teacher and EdPuzzle. So that was probably about sixty percent of the meeting. And then after that, we talked about future projects such as the voice over IP phone system. We're piloting something called Parent Square for the community. We looked at our staff device refresh. We are replacing a lot of the Windows desktops this year and then the remainder of them next year. And the last thing was talking about the student chromebook refresh that we do every four or five years.
Thanks, Rob. Okay, personnel, SED resolve. That items eleven-two through eleven-eight be approved via consent agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? passes? Executive session be resolved with Board of Education at our executive session at six forty-six PM for the purpose of discussing the plan of their personal, so motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed? passes?